Good evening. I would like to call to order the February 20th regular board meeting of the Midai City Schools. Before we begin, I would like to offer a moment of silence to acknowledge the staff and students who tragically lost their lives last week at Marjory Stoneman Douglas High Our most heartfelt condolences are with the families and community of Parkland, Florida. Thank you for attending and please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Mr. Eastwood.
Here.
Ms. Pavlik.
Here.
Mr. Skidmore.
Here.
Mr. Ross.
Here.
Ms. Parkers.
Here.
Thank you.
First items approval of the minutes for the special meeting on January 22nd.
I move to approve the minutes of the January 22nd meeting.
I would second that motion.
Ms. Pavlik.
Aye.
Mr. Eastwood.
Aye.
Mr. Skidmore.
Aye.
Mr. Ross.
Aye.
Ms. Parkers.
Aye.
Thank you.
Next up is the approval of minutes for the February 5th work session.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes for the February 5th work session.
I second.
Any comments, questions, modifications?
Mrs. Parkers, I'm abstaining because I wasn't there.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ross.
Mr. Eastwood.
Aye.
Ms. Pavlik.
Aye.
Mr. Skidmore.
Aye.
Mr. Ross.
Abstain.
Ms. Parkers.
Aye.
Thank you.
Would you have a consent agenda this evening? Are there any additions, removals, or modifications to be made to the agenda?
I just have a comment down in the, which could lead to that. Down in action item I, number one, the pay scale was under administrative content and I think it got moved today at noon, around that time, to public content. But it's just a little concerning that it wasn't available, you know, with the agenda, you know, as our practice has been. That's our practice to try to have the pertinent data as part of the agenda and it wasn't. So I don't know if we should pull it and look at it next month. I don't know what the thoughts of the board are, but I do think we should have those things in the public content so they're not in the administrative content. It was probably just an oversight, but it is a contract amendment that we're voting on basically, and the details are in the PDF that now is in the public content. But before noon, it was not.
I know that many times we do have contract information in public content. I don't know if we always have details of union contracts in public content. I know we'll have if there's a 2% raise or whatnot available. This was part of the memorandum of understanding that was previously approved by the board with the contract that we needed to approve this or come up with something.
Yep, not a pay scale though. I don't think we approved a pay scale.
No, we did not approve the pay scale, but it was part of the MOU that one would be developed.
Right. So this is the pay scale and it was not in the public content. Now it is. So my recommendation is to push it off for a month, but it's up to the rest of the board.
Any other comments?
I see Rob's point because we are truly pushing for transparency and having visibility. The agenda is put up 48 hours or so in advance. It was minus this piece, so I see where you're coming from. I understand that point.
I would agree with both Mr. Skidmore and Mrs. Pavlik. I wouldn't impose tabling it for another month.
Mike, just another thought. I definitely understand the transparency thing. It's something we have tried hard to build, don't want to do anything to take away from that. However, with the memorandum of understanding, I felt like we knew that we were going to have to cross this bridge. We knew the parameters were going to be involving more staff and that the staff we were asking to do more duties and that there would be some slight adjustments, which when you break it down, which has been broken down for us, it is slight adjustments. By not, I mean, I don't want to hinder what we're asking people to do in the process of what we're moving forward, so does that, does one complicate the other?
If you would like to remove the item, we can just make a motion to table that item.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda with the exception of action item I-1. In other words, approve having the agenda set up the way it is. Okay, thank you.
The reason why the action I is on the agenda is because of ongoing negotiations that we had with the teachers' union moving into this school year. Last year, we worked with the union to roll over their contract for a two-year period and we had three items, which we created MOUs to carry over into the current school year. I think we've had substantial conversation about that through work sessions and in regular board meetings, especially last school year when we were in the process of making that happen. One of my concerns about tabling tonight's item is that we have teachers that have been working very diligently in these new CDC curriculum development coordinator positions. One of the things we've really tried to do in the development of these coordinator positions is to be financially responsible and increase academic opportunities for all of our students. One thing that I quickly noted in coming into the district was a lack of curricular leadership across the district. And that's not sliding our principals, that's not sliding our curriculum coordinators that are currently in their roles. The reality is, is that we have a district of almost 7,000 students, if not 7,000 students, and we had two people at central office trying to work together to coordinate curriculum, which is the reason why we're here. In looking at ways to improve our curriculum at a minimal cost, that's one of the reasons why I personally brought up with the union the implementation of these CDCs. Honestly, I think the district could use another administrator, to be quite straightforward. District our size, it would not be uncommon, I would even argue that it would be the norm to have at least three administrators at the board office for curriculum, somebody to oversee the district, a primary and secondary. We felt that it was a better bang for the buck to go with the curriculum coordinators because what this has done is put multiple leaders who are teachers in curricular positions across the entire district and in all of our buildings. And I have to thank our union because they have made the decision, and they didn't have to do this, and it was a risk for them in case things didn't pan out with the MOU, but they saw the importance in having these CDC positions and they've been serving in those capacities throughout the school year without pay. And they cannot get paid until this MOU is settled and approved by the board. So yes, we could table it and put it another month, and of course, that's the board decision. But I want to make sure that you had all of the information in regards to where these CDC positions have come and gone. One other thing to note, if you look at that salary schedule, and I think the average public probably wouldn't understand it, because I know before I came into education, it wouldn't make a lot of sense to me. It's a bunch of decimals. And the way that pay scale works is those decimals are percentages based off of the base salary. The reality is with what we have negotiated with our union, it's a minimal increase for our current department heads. The overall cost to the district is somewhere around $100,000. That's in large part due to the number of positions that we added. So you can see that $100,000 is getting us curriculum leadership from the teachers who are in the trenches in every building without adding an administrator position or adding benefits. I think the other advantage moving this direction, and I think this has been a very legitimate concern of several of our board members, is well, what's the long-term impact of this? What happens if the levy doesn't pass in May 8th? As superintendent, and this is why you hired me, I'm an advocate for our kids, and I'll continue to promote decisions that are in the best interests of our students in the classroom. I strongly believe that this is one. If we do get into a financial crisis, which I'm hoping we are never there, we simply don't fill them because they're supplemental contract positions, so they wouldn't require any kind of rifts or anything like that. It would just be not filling the positions.
And just if I could, in some of the conversations we've had prior to this to get a better understanding, when you say it costs about $100,000, for people listening to this, there's very few people to get more than 1,200 to 1,500 per individual as far as a stipend to help in these positions. These aren't $5,000 add-ons across the board. I just wanted to clarify, it's very small amounts to people who are taking on a role, leadership role, to hopefully help us move in the direction we want to go, if I'm understanding that right.
That's correct. In terms of the other supplemental contracts we offer, it is not a large amount. In addition to that, and David probably doesn't want to hear me saying this publicly, but it's actually lower than most of the surrounding districts for similar type supplemental contracts that the unions agree to.
Could we consider separating it?
Well, they are separated. So they are separated as a separate action item. So I move, or I make a motion to approve the agenda and actions as they are placed.
As a clarification, was the first, we had a first and a second on the first motion?
No.
We denied a second. Okay.
Right now, I'm confused.
We currently have two motions on the table. One is to table action item I. The second is to approve it as it is placed currently.
I'll second tabling it from the first motion.
Just as a point of process, I don't, I want to approve the consent agenda, but I think we ought to hold this one out separate so that it doesn't possibly hang up anything. Is that what you're doing? Then I'll make a second.
Okay, we're looking at the motion approving the agenda as is with the item in question being separated as it currently is for further discussion. Ms. Parkers.
Aye.
Mr. Eastwood.
Aye.
Mr. Skidmore.
Aye.
Ms. Pavlik.
Aye.
And Mr. Ross.
No.
I'd like to now make a motion to decline the first motion that was to table item I.
I would second that motion.
There was, it was open, but there was no second to it.
I guess we're done with that. Now, can I, can we approve the consent agenda?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
You made a motion on adds and removes, so.
I second.
Okay, Ms. Parkers.
Aye.
Ms. Pavlik.
Aye.
Mr. Eastwood.
Aye.
Mr. Skidmore.
Aye.
Mr. Ross.
No.
Thank you.
Several items for communication this evening, and I had a couple of things that I wanted to cover prior to our Northrup Elementary School presentation, which I'm excited for. I heard the mic checks before we walked in. The first and foremost, I know this has been on many people's mind, but district security and I've got to tell you the amount of emails that I received over the course of the weekend, 30 to 40 easily from parents and community members, to the discussion that we had this morning in our administrative team meeting, which includes all of our building principals, to all of the exchanges of emails that I've had throughout the day with area superintendents. One thing I wanted to mention upfront is that I think what you'll find is that we will share minimal details, as will all other districts regarding safety plans and procedures. And I think that's for obvious reasons, but to state the obvious, because I think it's important for people to know, we don't want our safety procedures necessarily out there for the general public to be aware of, and that's to increase security within the district when we do have to follow those procedures. However, our building administration, our district administration, our teachers, our staff, and our students are well-versed in all of those procedures. It's something that we regularly practice. It's also something that we regularly scrutinize and try and improve. One of the emails that was going around today amongst the superintendents was, well, who's making changes to their plan? And my response was, we're always making changes to our plan. That a single incident, unless it points out that we're not doing something the way we could or should, we're going to continue with our current safety plans. We've done a lot in the district over the course of the last several years to try and increase school security. Every one of our buildings has a door trap, so you cannot directly enter into the hallways of our buildings. You have to be buzzed in through a door trap. We also expect visitors to report to the main office where they receive an ID badge. And we will be reminding all of our staff about those procedures as we move forward. I think one thing I heard loud and clear from several of our parents and community members over the course of the weekend is just a reminder to staff what those procedures are. So we discussed that today and principals are going to be relaying that information. In addition to that, each year, we have to submit our district's safety plans to the government. And correct me if I'm wrong, John, but I believe it's Homeland Security?
ODE and Homeland Security.
ODE, Ohio Department of Education, and Homeland Security actually review our safety procedures, and they approve them or they don't approve them. And the last two years that I've been in the district, both years, all of our plans in every building have been approved on the first shot. So I think that's commendable to the kind of plans that we currently have put together. I think where things become a real struggle with school safety is trying to figure out how we can really make our students as safe as we can. Metal detectors is another big thing that I've heard come up, and I'm not sure that fits our district and our community. And the reason why is because I would be concerned that putting money into something like a metal detector is a safety blanket, because I'm not concerned about our students walking around in the community armed. I'm not concerned about our students hurting each other out in the community. If for heaven's sakes something were to happen, I think it would be in isolation, just like what happened in Florida. And if that individual wanted to get into the building, they were going to get into the building. Where I do think we need to increase our focus though is through communication. Communication is actually our number-one force in working against a situation like this. And I just saw an article today where they were interviewing one of the students in Florida, and the student's comment was, "I saw this individual was being bullied. If only I would have told somebody." So at our high school, they've done an outstanding job implementing a campaign called Say Something, and that's a message that we want to have across the district, and it's not just a message across the district, but it's a message across the community, because the community is going to help us keep safe schools. So we really encourage, if there's any concerns, that whether it's a student, whether it's a community member, whether it's a parent, that you reach out to the school district or the local police department and make us aware. Even if it ends up being nothing, we'd rather hear about it and investigate it so we know that we're keeping our students safe. I did send out a letter on Friday to our parents. I felt it was important just to reassure them that we were making school safety and security a priority and that we have in the past. One of the important things on there is our school helpline. Our school helpline is a way to anonymously report concerns. It could be anything from a school safety issue to a individual student safety issue, you name it, you can report it through that website. And when that report comes through, we have individuals, administrators in the district that are immediately notified, whether it's a Sunday night or a Friday morning, it doesn't matter, that immediately goes through. So my big encouragement with our safety is to continue to work with our students to report when they see things that just don't look right or don't seem right, because that's one of the major ways that we can prevent school violence. Wanted to know if there were any questions from our board in regards to school safety or procedures or anything like that? The second item I wanted to mention is Black History Month, and this is a question I've gotten a few times over the course of the last several months. And you may or may not know, but February is Black History Month, and many schools do an emphasis or show an emphasis on black history and black history recognition throughout the month of February. This is a discussion that we've had with all of our building principals. I actually attended our elementary curriculum meeting where they were actually talking about it, and what we've tried to do is have a coordinated effort to how we're recognizing these kinds of things, and not just Black History Month, but 9/11, Veterans Day, anything else that we think we should be working with our students on. With black history in particular, what we've tried to do is implement it within the curriculum and encourage our teachers, whether it's a history teacher, a science teacher, a language arts teacher, but to work that within what they're teaching in their classes to expand what our students are exposed to. So we're trying to celebrate African Americans and black history through education, and that's an important piece of anybody's curriculum throughout the year, but it's an even larger focus during this time of the year. I know many of our elementary principals as well have been reading quotes during morning announcements and showing video clips and things like that. And I would encourage, if anybody wants to know what we are doing, to reach out to us, because we'd like to share that with you. And if anybody has ideas of things we could do more, again, I would encourage that feedback because we want to do things better. Next up, I'd like to invite Ms. Alec in Northrup up for their presentation this month.
Good evening, Mr. Sable, Mr. Chambers, and the board. I would like to introduce to you one of our third grade teachers, Mrs. Shelley Bonner, and I've got a couple of third graders that want to talk to you about a program that traditionally we've done with our third grade each year. I don't want to, I want them to be able to present. They worked hard and practiced hard on this today. So actually, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Bonner to tell you a little bit about it.
Good evening. So the program that we came to talk to you tonight about is called People Together. It's partnered with the Society of Handicapped Citizens, and it's a program to sensitize kids, adults, anybody on what it's like to live with a disability. And Mrs. Fravel is the one that comes and presents to the students. We've had her come year after year. She's wonderful. She brings in picture books for the kids to look at, hands-on activities. She even brings in wheelchairs, crutches, things like that, to let the kids experience what it may be like. On the last day, she brings in two wonderful people that the kids get to interview and talk to and see what it's like to live with disabilities. So I'd like to introduce you two, two Northrup proud kiddos, these precious kids. This is Andrew Lopozzi, he likes to go by Andy, and this is Isabella Rosen, and she goes by Bella.
Hi, my name is Andrew. Here are some things that I learned from People Together presentation. Be nice to everyone, no matter how they look. Just because they have a disability doesn't mean they can't do stuff we can't do. If you are a friend with a person with a disability, you can learn how they might need to be helped. Never assume that they need help. Ask first. Things that Ms. Fravel taught us. What dyslexia looks like. Sign language, Braille. She also bought equipment for us to try out, like crutches, wheelchairs, and walkers.
Hi, my name is Isabella, and I'm going to tell you how wonderful People Together is. First, my classmates and I learned how to read Braille, which is a type of sign language so people who can't see or hear can read. Second, we did an activity that helped us understand how it feels to not be able to hear clearly. We learned how helpful hearing aids are for some people. We really connected to this because we have a classmate that wears hearing aids. Students with disabilities like to do the same things that we like to do. For example, they like going to the mall, seeing movies, and cheering with a cheer squad. We should respect everyone and their differences because we're also a lot alike.
I just want to say thank you all for coming and thank you so much for the encouragement that's going on inside the walls of the schools and the classrooms. That's absolutely wonderful.
Thank you. Andy and Bella, you did a great job. Thank you very much.
And we've gotten some great feedback from parents too, you know, because their child will come home and share what they learned through this program, so.
Thank you.
You guys okay if I put your picture up on my You guys okay if I put your picture up on my Twitter site? So check it out. I'll try and have it up by the morning. And the last item I have to share with you tonight is my normal levy update. What I wanted to talk about this evening is what we are calling our levy. We've been holding many community meetings, as well as Mr. Chambers and I have been visiting all of the buildings over the course of the school year. And the number-one item that we have been getting feedback on is why is it referred to as an emergency levy? So we want to clarify that information with our community. And you can see here on the agenda, I listed it as substitute levy, and that's because of confusion that we've seen with the language. What the levy is, is it is a substitute levy. And on the ballot, the ballot language is going to read as a substitute, a substitute levy. So it is not another emergency levy. What it is, is it is a substitute to or a substitute for the emergency levy. So this levy replaces that emergency levy. The reason why it's a substitute continuous levy and not just a continuous levy is because with the substitute, we are mandated to stay in the same dollar collection as the emergency levy was for. So asking for more money is not an option when you're looking at a substitute levy. We have worked on, Amy's worked on updating our literature. And if you check out the levy webpage or any of the pamphlets or brochures that we're putting out for informational purposes, it now says at the top, substitute levy or continuous substitute levy. We are trying to be much more clear with our language, that when we are bringing up the emergency, that that "to" or that "for," which are very important words in this circumstance, are mentioned. We do have another community levy meeting coming up at the end of the month, 27th, on the 27th, and that is going to be at Wait. So we'll be visiting Mrs. Greis's building. Again, that'll be informal, laid-back conversation, answer any questions that people have regarding the levy. So it's solely meant for informational. And I got to tell you, the feedback we've gotten specifically from parents as we've been going through this process has been very, very eye-opening. The approach that we've taken in these meetings is rather than talking at or to everybody, is basically just saying, "Do you have questions?" And having conversation. And we've had really rich conversation, not just about the levy, but people's expectations about the future of our district. So I'm looking forward to continuing those conversations as we move forward.
Now to bring you all some fascinating information. The district bank balance increased by $1.2 million in January to $70.68 million. The revenues were above last January by $1.17 million. And all funds except for our property tax allocation, which includes your tangible personal property tax loss reimbursement monies and other funding, account for this increase. The general fund expenditures were below last January by $808,000. Payroll, purchase services, and transfers and advances account for this decrease. We had sales tax fund, it's currently at $3.17 million. The district received a distribution from the county of $786,000 in January. We also spent $37,700. Fixtures, relamping, turf replacement, and fleet lease agreement accounted for the expenditures. The district received $73,955 in interest income. And this brings our total for the fiscal year to $544,000. This amount is approximately $100,000 under the totals collected for all of fiscal years '14, '15, and '16. We currently have 241 days in true days cash. And if you recall, this is the amount, if we take our budget for the year, divide by 365, we have basically 241 days at that amount.
Okay, moving on to board communications. Anyone have any committees or updates they'd like to provide?
On the facilities committee, we've had a couple cancellations, but for good reason. Part of it was dealing with our internet information. You guys had to go and meet, and that was good. But I'm sure that we've also gotten a deluge of interest on updating and maintaining and, you know, reviewing our security, safety within the district. So I'm sure that that'll be part of our focus here in the next few meetings.
With policy, we haven't yet met, we had some scheduling issues, I think, earlier in the year, and I believe we meet tomorrow with the policy committee. So we'll have some more work product from the committee come out probably in the next month or two. So thank you.
Last week, I sat in on the Rec Center Advisory Committee for Ron, and Mike Wright provided a whole bunch of information for us on the financial statistics. He reported that the revenues for the month were down in all departments, except for programs and guest services. Expenses were up, except for memberships, facility rentals, and café. Learned all kinds of things about thefts incidents and injuries that happened there. There were a few. The sponsor approval, he introduced two more sponsors for the track railing, and those are going to be two that we look at tonight, I believe. And that the current program manager put in her two weeks' notice. They are looking to move the current program specialist into the open position. I've known that person. They're looking to move into the vacated position, and I can't think of anyone better suited to take on that role, so I'm happy for them.
Also, the finance committee meeting is tomorrow evening as well. I'd like to thank the board members for the updates, as well as Mr. Sable and Mr. Chambers for their updates and communication. I also wanted to point out, in board docs, under the superintendent's communication tab, there are some flyers for upcoming events, Little Mermaid, and the revised community chat meetings. So check that out for those flyers there. Reiterating, keeping our students safe is a priority for me as a board member. I know we've talked about it, Mr. Eastwood talked about it, facilities will be discussing it more, Mr. Sable gave a very good update about what the district's doing. We're always reviewing and practicing our school safety procedures. I did recently learn that Ohio's gun laws are very similar to those of Florida. That's concerning to me, both as a board member and as a parent. I encourage anyone else who has those concerns to do what I did and reach out to our local legislators, urge them to enact gun safety laws, and do all that they can to help keep our students safe. Whenever we make decisions up here, I always ask myself, "Is it best for the kids? This is something that would be best for our kids."
If it please the board, it is recommended the board approve the January 2018 Treasurers Report. Item number two, supplemental to the 2017-18 Permanent Appropriations. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following supplemental to 2017-18 Permanent Appropriations. You have a number of supplementals here. The only one that is a federal fund is 599-9018. As you can see, the feds are taking away, of our $12,000, they're already taking away $147. The rest are just changes throughout to get the different clubs and get the different clubs through the spring here, and we're looking forward to having more of these in the coming months. Any questions?
The first item in superintendent's recommendations is donations. There is a particular donation here that I would like to point out, and... Oops.
I apologize, I was moving us ahead.
Move we approve the treasures action item?
I second.
Any questions or comments among the board?
Mr. Skidmore?
Aye.
Ms. Pavlik?
Aye.
Mr. Eastwood?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Ms. Parkers?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any items or questions regarding the treasure items from the public? Thank you. We will move on to the superintendent's action items.
First item is donations. We had a very generous donation following one of our earlier board meetings this year, where we had Mr. Hodkey and Mr. Harrison come in and present on the Wall of Fame and initiatives that they were trying to take to make sure we're preserving that history in our high school. In seeing that presentation, we had a family in the community that wanted to step up and sponsor the bulk of that project. And what they have pledged is a total of $15,000, $5,000 over the next three years towards the Wall of Fame. That alone pays for the new digital signs that we have out there. So the first donation is on this board agenda for $5,000 from the Funk family, which is Heather, Erin, and Austin. I do want to let the board know that we have invited the Funk family to come to our board meeting next week, and the athletic boosters would like to present them with a plaque thanking them for their generous contribution to our school district. Unfortunately, they had some athletic activities and weren't able to make it this evening, but I do expect to see them next week. The second resolution is Medina County Recreation Center sponsorships, as mentioned by Valerie. It is recommended that the Board of Education accept the following sponsors per the City of Medina, Medina City Schools Recreation Center sponsorship agreement. Included with this recommendation is pictures of what the actual sponsors will look like, and I just wanted to remind the board that this will also go through city council in order to get final approval. Also, I wanted to point out that we've included with these banner recommendations the length of the donation because of questions that came up at our previous board meeting. The third item is resolution amendment to the Educational Service Center Medina County Service Agreement for the 17-18 school year. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the resolution to amend the service agreement between the Medina City School District and the Education Service Center of Medina County to provide special education services to Medina City School Districts, effective August 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018. It kind of feels good to be able to present this to you. Usually when I'm presenting you resolutions, it's because of costs that we have to the district. When we put together our agreement with the ESC, which we'll probably actually be recommending to you here in the next month or two for next school year, we have to do a projection when we're looking at especially special education services. Our services were not as costly over the course of this past year, so we're looking at approximately a $34,000 refund to the district. I do want the board to know that we did have the option of leaving this money in place with the ESC or rolling it over into next year, and we thought it appropriate to recommend the refund to the board. And item number four, policy for consideration, and this is a second reading, so this will be for adoption if approved. And this is the gifted policy that we've been discussing for a couple months now, and these are all mandated state updates to the policy. So it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the second reading with possible adoption of the following revised policy. Item number five is calendar for the 2018-2019 school year. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the calendar for the 2018-2019 school year. And last month, we had placed this calendar for board and public review. It's been on review for 30 days. I'm not sure if any of you have received feedback, but I've only received positive feedback regarding the upcoming calendar. I want to thank our calendar committee, who's sitting in this room right now, for their hard work in putting this calendar together. We definitely looked at some changes and adjustments from the previous few years in regards to moving those early releases and eliminating many of those. In addition, we are working to work more collaboratively in partnership with Brunswick City Schools and also with the Medina County Career Center. Our two districts are the biggest in the county, and we do make up the bulk of the Career Center. So it really is advantageous to us, the three of us, to work together in a trio to try and align our calendars. I know Dr. Qualick had shared with me that they're already in the process of formulating the 2019-2020 calendar, and we're hopeful to have that to present for public review in the not-too-distant future. So now that we have transitioned to ours, which was the holdup previously because we were on days, we are planning on getting ahead of the calendars and making sure that those are available to our parents earlier. Number six is field trips for the 2018-2019 school year. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following overnight field trips in compliance with Policy 2340 for the 2018-2019 school year. The first field trip is educational foreign travel. This is to Lima, Peru. And this trip does not occur this summer, but the following summer. So the teachers and organization are looking for approval so that they can research the details of the trip moving forward. The two other trips are our regular annual DC trips by our middle schools. And we have several stipend payments, again, this evening for teachers hosting student teachers. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the stipend payments for Mr. Christopher Miller and Mr. David Wymera in the amount of $160 each, and Mr. Christopher Passinger and Mr. Michael O'Brien and Mr. Jill Gordon in the amount of $320 each for being a cooperating teacher for a University of Akron student during the fall semester of 2017. And again, I want to point out that these payments are not occurring through us, we are just passed through. These are payments occurring from the universities to these individuals.
I think it's Mrs. Jill Gordon, Mrs.
Oh.
Or Mr.
Gotcha. Mrs. Jill Gordon, Mr. So these payments come through the universities, they're just passed through for us, and I know many of these teachers dedicate these funds back to their classrooms. The second stipend recommendation is it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the stipend payment to Ms. Mary Jo Morgan in the amount of $350 for being a cooperating teacher for an Indian Wesleyan university student during the fall semester. teacher for an Indian Wesleyan university student during the fall semester of 2017. And then the last list of items, it is recommended to the Board of Education that you approve the following personnel items. All of them, of course, is pending receipt of resignations and/or completion of hiring packets, including background checks.
I make a motion to accept action items H.1 through 9.
I would make a second on that motion.
Is there any discussion among the board members?
Just as a comment, I appreciate the work you did, Becky, with the committee that worked with the REC Center to come up with sponsors and to do work on that. I know a couple years ago, as a result of one of our joint meetings with the city, several of the board sent emails and kind of pushed that we do a little bit more to try to get sponsors over there, mainly under the guise of naming rights that we've kind of adjusted now since we adjusted it to call it sponsorship. But to start to see the fruition of that and to see that there are actually sponsors there that are helping to come up with some revenue to help offset what we pay toward the Capital Improvement Fund is a positive thing. So I know it's taken about four years to have that happen, but we're glad to see that there's progress with it, and we appreciate the work the administration did with that. And Ron, your work with the REC Center Committee, I know you've worked hard with it too, and started with Doug Adamczyk, who was here before, who was helping push for it. So, thank you.
I would also like to thank the staff that worked on the calendar, that committee. I have only received positive feedback as well from parents who are very excited to not have early release days anymore, so thank you very much. Any public discussion? Hearing none? Mr. Chambers?
Ms. Parkers?
Aye.
Mr. Eastwood?
Aye.
Ms. Pavlik?
Aye.
Mr. Skidmore?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Thank you.
And action item I, this is the co-curricular salary index that we discussed at the beginning of the board meeting for the curriculum development coordinators. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the co-curricular salary index for the position of curriculum development coordinator referred to as CDC as submitted.
Mr. Sable, my only concern is with the levy coming up.
Mr. Ross, we need to have a motion first, and then we can discuss. I make a motion to approve this action item.
I'll second the motion.
Mr. Ross?
I lost my thought. Yeah, the CDC's, okay. My concern is, since nobody wants to table it, I mean, what is the concern if we waited till after the levy? That's really a hang-up for me. I want to, I would like to know, I would like to know that the people are supporting us before we initiate a new cost increase. And now with that said, I know I voted to support all-day kindergarten, and I did that because two things went into that decision. One was the work by Tina Cassidy and Matt, they presented some data, which showed how good it was for the kids. And the other issue was with all-day kindergarten, Amy Busby put out a survey, and it was pretty overwhelming that that's what the community wanted, knowing that it was going to be before the levy, we had to start implementing it before the levy was going to be voted on. And so I was on board with that. But now, so that's that. So now here's another new cost increase, and I'm just, I guess, I'm not against the CDC's, I love your vision, I love what you're doing, and with what Tina's doing and what the union is doing. I love, I love all that. I just want to make sure we have the people's support first, and I just, I just feel like we're getting ahead of ourselves, and so that's my question. Why can't we wait till after we get their support?
With me coming in last year, we've tried to take a different approach and different philosophy in regards to working with our community. And every student, every day has been our motto since the beginning of last year, and it's vital that we maintain a student-centered approach to provide the best academics to our students. One of the ways to do that is through collaboration with our community as we move forward and make these decisions, and to try not to have a reactive approach when things come up. I firmly believe that being fiscally responsible goes beyond just pinching pennies. Being fiscally responsible also means spending the way that our, the money the way that our community expects us to, to provide the best academics for our students. Adding the CDC positions is one step in doing that. My concern is that if we take a more reactive approach and wait for levy passages, that we're going to be dragging our feet in providing services for our students. If the levy doesn't pass, the community will be speaking loud and clear, and what they will be saying is that maybe we're offering too much as a district, and that we need to scale back, and we'll listen if that's what they say. And that's why I've spoken at the levy meetings, and I've said, "I want to take a different approach if we're making cuts, if we ever get in that position." What I don't want to do is have top-down cuts where our parents feel like we're holding stuff over their heads to pass a levy. What I'd like to do is bring in a committee of parents, community members, staff members, students, and say, "Hey, this is what our community has laid out to us, we are a partner with our community, let's work together to look at where we will make changes and cuts." Right now, the CDC positions were not just a whim. We did our strategic planning process last year, we collaborated. Curriculum, all-day kindergarten, increasing curricular opportunities for all of our students was a by-far-top priority. As a matter of fact, Ms. Busby shared with me today a door-to-door pamphlet that Kids First wants to hand out, and the first thing I said to her is, "Where's the highlighting of academics?" I mean, that is the bulk of what we do, and it's also the bulk of our strategic plan. So what I'm trying to show the community is that we hear you, we listen to you, we want to increase academic opportunities for our students, and we want to do it in a financially reasonable way, and in a way that we can impact as many students as possible across our district. So I feel by moving forward with this, and this is my personal opinion, but I think we're showing good faith in our community and that collaborative relationship, and that we're demonstrating to the community that, "You know what, we heard you, and we're going to put our money where our mouth is and make sure it's improving academics for our kids in the classroom." Does that mean that some teachers across the district get a little bit of an additional stipend? It does, but they're working for that money. It's not a handout. They are truly leaders in their buildings, leaders in their departments, and we're working on them being leaders in the district as well, and that's part of the collaboration we're trying to do and the coordination we're trying to do across the district and across the buildings.
It was part of our strategic plan. The community did want an emphasis and a focus on curriculum. We've been talking about this for several months. The CDC's are curriculum-focused, and part of this plan also was to get more CDC's at the elementary levels, which is where we found it was needed. So it is the best thing for kids, it is a response to what the community wants, and is best for the kids.
Well, again, I'm not, I love the program, I'm just, I just don't like the timing. Just my thoughts.
And I agree with Mr. Ross. We got a spreadsheet that was sent to us that does, and it's, for some reason, it's not part of the breakdown of the information there, but it's about, for next year, it's about a $54,000 increase, which is not that much in a district our size. $86 million roughly a year in expenses, it's not that much. But we do, we are currently under contract, we currently have a contract for which that has been negotiated by our administration, previous administration, with the union. We do have people that serve in those roles, or we have in the past. I realize there's a change with maybe job description or something like that, but to me, the timing doesn't seem smart, doing this before we vote on the levy. Seems like we should wait and listen to the voters. And also, it doesn't seem right to spend money that the voters haven't entrusted us necessarily with. Yes, we have a balance in our account, but the reality is, we're going to spend down that balance to, I don't know, don't hold me to it, what, $24 million from, say, $70 million after, say, four years with the levy passed? Now, without the levy passed, we have, as Mr. Sable said, lots of adjustments to make. So I want to do what's best for students, and that's always the top priority, but we need to be fiscally conservative, and I think it's important to make sure that we don't get ahead of the voters, and that's where I'm coming from. Thank you. Plus, I had an issue as well, that we didn't have all the information in the agenda, that's why I would have tabled it and had further discussion next time. So between the two of those things, I have an issue with it tonight. Thank you.
I appreciate the fiscal conservative perspective, I really do, and I am in the camp of fiscal conservancy. But I, in my perspective of doing business, I often have to spend money to get the most out of the investment I already have in place. I really don't see that this is doing anything different than that. We have some really good quality individuals in our district that have agreed to step up, more individuals who are taking a role than what we've had in the past. It's like you're tooling up a machine to perform more efficiently and for what, you know, $1,200 stipend or $1,500 stipend. I really think it's a very minute, I don't think it's a dollar issue, I think it's worth, in my perspective, it's making, making it possible to improve the investment we already have, so I am as conservative as the next person financially, but I find myself on the side I don't want to hold up something and then react and have to be, I think this one here makes sense to me, that's all.
I agree with both of you. I believe that this board has been fiscally conservative, which is why we are in the good position that we are in. However, we have been reactionary, which at the time was fine, but now I think we've been trying to build trust in the community, we are moving forward. This is response to the community, just like when they go to vote in May, that'll be a response from the community. And this was part of the memorandum of understanding that was approved. The CDC's currently have been doing this without being paid, and they won't get paid until the board decides to do something.
Do you think it's okay to not put things in the agenda and wait until noon before the meeting to vote on them? Does that make you, are you comfortable with that? With contracts?
No. Everything was in the agenda, and we've been talking about it for months.
The administrative content, it wasn't.
The pay scale, and there have been other times where the pay-
The pay scale was not in the agenda till noon today.
And there have been other times where pay scales have not been in agendas.
So I'm not reacting, I'm making sure that we're trying to be transparent.
I think we are.
Right. So...
Moving forward, I don't disagree with you one bit, and I think that we have to encourage our administrators to help us in that regard, to get that out sooner. I'm not one bit disagreeing with you, that is something that we've dealt with in the past, we don't want to see ourselves falling back into that, so I appreciate that perspective, but...
I'd like to add that one of the biggest things that I hear are inconsistency between the schools, from elementary school to elementary school, things are being taught here, not here. The CDC role, per the job descriptions that we were given, this is going to, this is solving that, because now those CDC's are working, you have all of them, so say, a family moves from one neighborhood to another, so they go from Fenn and they go to Blake, they're going to be learning the same things at Blake that they were learning at Fenn, and this is what the CDC is meant to solve, okay?
Let me ask the board this. So if we amend this contract tonight, would we amend other contracts that we have to give increases before we pass the levy? Are we in favor of that as a board? I mean, at what point do we say, "Let's hold tight and get a levy passed"? When do we do that?
I think with this being, as Rebecca mentioned, memorandum of understanding, this was something that was talked about back in the previous contract negotiations, we're holding up our end of the deal, per se. These teachers have been working and doing this role without pay, it's only fair to them, I think it's only fair to our students. I totally agree with you with the lack of visibility, and I'm sure that moving forward, that is something that can be easily resolved as a triple check of something like this moving into the public content, because yes, that is, that did give me grief too, because of our pledge to be transparent to the community.
Mr. Skidmore, are you referring to just contract agreement or employment contract agreements or all agreements? Because we did amend the ESC agreement this evening, which fortunately that resulted in money to us, but there have been times where we've had to pay for additional services. Have we, should we also hold up on that to wait for a levy?
No, I'm asking about major contracts that we have, or is the board interested in amending or things like that, I guess? And that's, maybe it's rhetorical question, so...
If there is no more board discussion, is there any comments from the public? Hearing none? Shall we call roll?
Ms. Parkers?
Aye.
Mr. Eastwood?
Aye.
Ms. Pavlik?
Aye.
Mr. Skidmore?
No.
Mr. Ross?
No.
At this time, we'll have public participation. Community members wishing to address the board are asked to abide by the following guidelines. Please state your name, address, and affiliation. Please keep comments to a maximum of three minutes. All comments are to be directed to the Board of Education and not to any one individual. Comments shall focus on areas that have not been previously brought forward to the board by the individual or associated group, and comments will occur before each vote of action, which we already did. If there are no comments, I move that we go to executive session to consider the employment of a public employer official, the purchase of property for public purposes, or the sale of property at competitive bidding because premature disclosure would give an unfair competitive or bargaining advantage to a person whose personal and private interest is averse to general public interest, preparing for conducting or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment, details relative to the security arrangements and emergency response protocols for the school district, if disclosure of the matters discussed could reasonably be expected to jeopardize the security of the school district and legal matters.
Second. Ms. Parkers?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Eastwood?
Aye.
Ms. Pavlik?
Aye.
Mr. Skidmore?
Aye.
Thank you.
We will be coming back to adjourn, we do not expect to take any action this evening. I thank you all for coming, enjoy the nice weather. Enjoy the nice weather.